Okay. So, welcome to the Wildfire Preparedness Community Town Hall. For today, from seven to eight thirty is what we scheduled. Obviously, we have some flexibility, but we wanted to kind of set a timeline to work within. A couple of asks on our end, and I think from what I see, everybody is muted, which is greatly appreciated. What we will do moving forward, just some logistics before we get going, is we have a number of our personnel on the call as well. We'll do some introductions in a moment, but I've got Chief Forte, Haida Forte with us. She will be monitoring the chat. So if you have questions as we're going along, most of you are probably fairly Zoom savvy by now, but there is the chat feature at the bottom of the page. If you want to type in any questions into the chat, Haida will capture that, those as we go along. I will try and take some short breaks at some different sections in a piece of the presentation we have, and I can answer any questions relative to that at that time. And/or we have some time allocated at the end to do a bit of a question and answer session. So Haida can present those questions as well. The other option at the end is if you have questions and you want to raise your hand, we can then select individuals that want to propose other questions that way as well. We do want this to be interactive. We have some information that we do want to share with the group, and we want to actually provide some opportunity for some feedback from you as well, moving forward. So Oliver, the dog looked great. It just kind of caught my eye there. Yeah, no, that's totally, that's totally great. So we have got a couple of things to go through, and I don't want to spend a lot of time in the presentation portion in the PowerPoint, but it's only about eleven or twelve slides, but it has some content that I think will provide some context and big picture of what we've been doing for kind of preparedness and our capability and capacity to respond to wildfires. But before I get too far into that, I should formally introduce myself, and I am Brian Hutchinson. I'm the Fire Chief with the District of North Vancouver. I've been here since 2015. I came to the district as an Assistant Chief Operations, and then just about three years ago, I promoted to Fire Chief. Prior to the district, I was with the City of Vancouver for sixteen years, and then prior to that, I spent most of my twenties putting myself through school, working for B C wildfire services and the National Park Service in their wildfire program. And during that time, I had the pleasure of working in Jasper and Banff and Kootenay and Yoho and Mount Revelstoke Glacier, doing wildfires. So it's an area that I'm certainly very interested in. I've tried to stay engaged with the wildfire world while I've transitioned. I guess I'm past the transition phase, but while I've built my career in the structural side, and that is one of the things that really drew me to the district was there's a number of great things that the District of North Vancouver Fire and Rescue has going for it. But one of those aspects is the wildfire, wildland urban interface risk that is in the community and the level of preparation that's been done to respond to that. So that's probably enough about me. And what I'll do is I'll introduce, we have Assistant Chief David Dale's on the call as well. Just let David do a brief introduction for himself.
Hi, thanks, Chief. Welcome, everyone. My name is David Dale. I'm one of the Assistant Chief of Operations for North Vancouver District. I've been in my role for approximately three years now. I live in the Parquet area, so I'm quite familiar with woodlands. In terms of my mandate as an Assistant Chief of Operations, I would be one who would be responding if we ever have an event in your community. Under the Office Fire Commissioner, I'm considered what's called a Task Force Team Leader or a Strike Team Leader. So I would be one who would be help organizing the response mode. And then in terms of my regular role as an Assistant Chief of Operations, I look after a lot of the emergency management pieces of the District of North Vancouver Fire. So those two components of my portfolios kind of blended nicely to this presentation. And I guess, side note, I was a student in grad school of Lori's. So I know her quite well, and I appreciate working alongside her in grad school and outside of grad school, and now working with her in the community. So that's me. Thanks, Chief.
Very nice. Thanks, David. And I too had the pleasure of having Lori share her expertise and knowledge at Royal Roads, and that was a pleasure as well. So thanks. Thanks again. Chief Forte.
Thank you, Chief. I would add to that as well. Lori instructed a course that I took at the Justice Institute a number of years ago. So you certainly have your role in the field, for sure. That's great. Thank you. Good to see you. My name is Haida Fortea. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief of Public Safety. The team that works for me, works for us, is the inspectors that you'll see out in your neighborhoods performing assessments. That is a lot of what we're looking at focusing our work on this summer. We've been fortunate enough to receive a rather large grant from Fire Smart and the Union of B C Municipalities. What we're doing is we're busy planning out how we're actually going to get out into the community and help to build up the resiliency of our communities. And that's part of what Kim Solney, who's one of our team members, what she's doing. She's a Captain in Public Safety, who's working on the pre-planning component right now for us so that we can plan out the events that are going to take place over the rest of the year, and help us to get out into the communities. So speaking of getting out into the communities, we really do want to get out into your communities more. I know that we did Fire Smart assessments on Fire Lane Two and Sunshine Falls, which I heard Captain Solney mentioning that she's going to be presenting that to the executive this weekend. We also were out in the Gray Rocks area. We're still working on that report, but we have the funding to do so much more. And the work that we can do during assessments in your communities, this is work that it's not, doesn't have to wait. It's work that you can take on yourself, and it doesn't have to be onerous. It doesn't have to be momentous. Sometimes the smallest changes can make a large difference when it comes to preparing ourselves for the eventuality of a wildfire. There's so much that we can do ourselves, and we would love to get out to your communities and help you to realize what it is that you can do to make yourselves safer. So we have the budgeting. We have received a grant, and all we need for you to do is to reach out to us and ask us, invite us out into your neighborhood to do that. So that's a large part of what Captain Solney is working on these days. We also have Captain Con Breaky, who is our Captain of Community Risk Reduction and Pre-Incident Fire Planning. So Con often is involved in managing our grants, scheduling our local Fire Smart assessments, and social media, and many other things. And I think a few of you probably recognize Con from doing assessments as well. So hello to both of them. And from the Public Safety Team, we are looking forward to supporting you more in the future. So please reach out to us. I believe we said fireadm@dnv.org.
That's correct. And I'll show the email address a little later. We'll share that. But great plug for Fire Smart. Nice. Good job. Excellent, everyone. So just as a reminder, if you have questions, chat function, feel free to start throwing them in there as we move. But what I might do to start is I'm going to screen share a short PowerPoint presentation with you and walk you through some pieces of that. So just give me a second here.
Looks good, Chief.
All right. So you can probably see a bit of presenter view there. But so one of the questions would be obviously is why a town hall meeting? And I think a lot of this really spurred for us out of the Sunshine Falls wildfire in 2020. What we found was that there were a lot of questions and concerns being raised during the incident and even after the incident, that I think we had an opportunity to address and make sure that the correct information was out there. But what it recognized for us is that we maybe hadn't done as thorough a job of communicating to our community in general, but specifically to our community out in Cascades, Sunshine Falls, and Woodlands, as to how prepared we are and the level of awareness we have around wildfire. I think regardless of what people's own perceptions are around climate change, those of us who've been paying attention, particularly since 2003, have noted, you know, a change in the conditions around wildfire in the province. And we've seen really unique fire behavior. We've seen accumulation of forest fuels over time. We've seen a drying trend. We've got a drought in the interior occurring. And quite unique is we've, in the past three years, we've had a wildfire of note on the North Shore each of those years. So 2018, we had the the fire just above Horseshoe Bay, the White Lake Fire, around four and a half acres. It had some fairly, usually we see fires die down in the evening. This fire actually gained momentum in the evening, which was unique for the fuel type that's on the coast here. And it was a coordinated response between West Vancouver Fire and Metro Vancouver wildfire and B C wildfire service. And then 2019, we had the Strip Creek Fire. Now, a lot of people think Strip Creek is Lions Bay, but the reality is the Strip Creek Fire was 300 meters outside the West Vancouver municipal boundary, near seascapes, just past Horseshoe Bay. Very aggressive fire, what would be classified as a rank three, rank four, which means very active ground fire with intermittent candling. Candling is basically what the word describes it, is a tree basically goes up in the shape of a candle. And so you have a lot of resources were actually directed to that fire. And then, of course, 2020, we had the Sunshine Falls wildfire. So it's unique in that the past three years, we've seen this. And what's really interesting for me is that the district began preparing for wildfire many years ago, but we really started to lean into this area of expertise really heavily, probably in the 2015, 2016 range. And I'll talk a little bit about where we've landed in the next slide. But so that's part of it for us is to have an opportunity to share with you what your fire service actually is about and can do and is responsible for. So a lot of people believe that a wildfire immediately falls under the role and responsibility of B C wildfire service, when in actuality is, as a municipality, you're responsible for anything that occurs within your municipal boundaries. B C wildfire will be a supporting agency, but you need to have a plan and be prepared for anything. Now, for those of you who may have looked, the municipal boundaries of the District of North Vancouver are quite significant. We have some crown land in there, but we go quite a ways into the wildland environment. So that is our responsibility. We know our partners at B C wildfire will be there, but it's been, the onus is on us as the authority having jurisdiction to make sure that we're prepared to respond and deal with these incidents. The other piece of why a town hall meeting is the reality is, is your communities are very unique. Typically, the wildland urban interface is, you know, we have an urban area, and where it stops, it abuts against a wildfire or a wildland area. Whereas in the district, it's, you know, we've got two areas that are what we would probably call heavy urban interface and quite frankly, intermix. So the Grouse Woods area is a classic example of intermix. You have a lot of cul-de-sacs, a lot of homes, and a lot of large timber strewn throughout. Your communities, while more so urban interface, the reality is, is to get to your location, one has to pass through a significant portion of wildland. So it really, your area is almost a hybrid between an urban interface area and an intermix area. And because of that unique situation, again, it's an opportunity for us to engage and make sure we're having those open dialogue. As I said, I want to talk a little bit about operational readiness. We do want to revisit a bit of the Fire Smart piece. I want to talk about some specialized wildfire equipment that we have been working on for quite some time, that will, has come to fruition and will be arriving this year, some of which our intent is to pre-deploy during high fire hazard out into your areas and give us a bit of a footprint in the area. We also want to show you and talk about our intent to activate a emergency response staging area. It's a piece of infrastructure that's already built that we're going to clean up and utilize. And then we also really want to engage with you about a proposal we'd like to have you consider around a second staging area that we would like to put out very close to the junction of Sassanat Lane and Sunshine Falls Lane. And I'll get into the reasons why, but we need your input on that, because without your support, we won't move forward on it. It is actually, it is for the entire area out there, but it has to also fit within your, you know, your vision of the Cascade, Sunshine Falls, and Woodlands areas as well. And then we'll have some, we'll have some concluding thoughts and questions at the end. So hopefully, everybody can see that we're on the operational readiness page. And one of the things I wanted to briefly talk about is in 2018, we put forward a four-year wildfire apparatus plan as a budget proposal. And that plan included the acquisition of three additional wildfire response vehicles. These are larger pickups, F-550s with a 500-gallon tank. They meet national standards as what's called a Type V wildfire engine. So we put in a request for three of those. We requested an additional structure protection unit. I'll talk about those in a minute. And we put in a request for a tender. A so a tender is basically a large water tank on wheels, probably about 2,000 to 3,000 gallons, and it would give us just some water supply backup out in that area. It also provides, some of the things we're going to talk about also enhance our post-disaster capability. The reality is that tender, as an example, will have a water purification system on it. So not only will it be able to provide us with water supply in a structural and wildland urban interface fire, but in a post-disaster setting, should our domestic water supply be impacted, we could actually come out to areas of the district that are impacted and refill residents' potable water. So I don't want to get too far into the disaster and emergency management world, but a lot of our stuff is dual purpose. So that four-year wildfire apparatus plan came into fruition, started rolling out last year. So we acquired our third SPU, or Structure Protection Unit, in early 2020. And we ordered, in the fall of 2020, we ordered the three wildfire response vehicles, which will arrive most likely August, September of this year. And the tender, the tactical tender, is slated for 2022. That's about a 12 to 18-month build. So we'll be putting in for 22, and it'll probably arrive in 23. So as you can see, our planning process is a multi-year initiative. We're not doing things spur of the moment. We're looking long term to make sure that we're planning for the future. So I mentioned I would talk a little bit about structure protection units. We have three of these in the District of North Vancouver. So they're a trailerized unit. Again, they meet a North American standard, but a B C standard particularly. They can provide sprinklers for 35 homes each. So we have the capacity of the three SPUs for just over 100 homes based out of those units. Now, we are the only fire department in British Columbia with three of these units. The next closest department would be Coquitlam, who has two. And the most other departments typically, they may have one if they have an urban interface challenge. So we are certainly leaning in and a leading organization with the province's Structure Protection Program, and have been doing so for quite some time. So I also wanted to give you a little, just a taste. This is not getting too into depth. I mentioned earlier to Haida, I could probably do a one-day workshop on operational readiness. So this is my condensed five-minute version. But training is something that the district has partnered with the province on to provide a lead role in moving the entire Metro Vancouver area and the province forward. So as an example, I've listed, you know, the Engine Boss Course. So the District of North Vancouver hosted one of the first Engine Boss Courses in B C about three weeks ago. We had 11 fire engines from nine different fire departments come to the district, and those fire engines came from the Sunshine Coast, from Pemberton, and from areas in Metro Vancouver. And we utilized Grouse Woods for a, basically a two-day field exercise where we actually employed tactics and strategies that would be used should a wildfire be encroaching on an urban area. Now, that was put forward and delivered by the B C wildfire service and the Office of the Fire Commissioner, and we were very happy to be able to be a host of that. The next piece, the Task Force Leader, and Chief Dale's mentioned, he's a certified Task Force Leader for the province. In fact, all seven of our chief officers are certified as Strike Team Task Force Leaders with the province. And that again is a program that we were the delivery point for Metro Vancouver. That said, Chief Dale's did his Task Force Leader course up in Kamloops, and Chief Forte did hers on the island, which is all part of our efforts to build our interagency relationships across the province. And then in 2020, we hosted the First Division Supervisor program, and one of our chief officers went through that. So to give you an idea what those roles are, an Engine Boss would be a captain on a fire engine that's responding to a wildfire environment. A Task Force Leader, that Chief Dale's and Chief Forte are both qualified as, would most likely have between five to seven fire engines, or fire engines and tenders, or wildfire response vehicles, under their control in the field. And then a Division Supervisor would probably have between three and five of those task forces under their control. So when you look at the command and control capacity within the District of North Vancouver, we're at a very high level with the rest of the province. In fact, we are often referred to as one of the Tier One Departments, and that puts us in the same category as the Colonas, the Kamloops, Penticton, and Sanwich. And those are probably the top four to five departments in British Columbia that have the capability and capacity to deal with wildfire. So again, I could go on about that for a while. So I'll take a step away. Another unique thing we did in September of last year, we actually had a large tabletop exercise. We held it out at the Deep Cove Fire Station. We had 24 individuals from 12 different agencies participate, and we actually had a full-day wildfire scenario, and we actually used our Indian Armed Communities of Woodlands, Sunshine Falls, and Cascades for that scenario. And in the room was not only the three fire departments from the North Shore, but Vancouver's Fireboat Team. It was B C wildfire, it was Metro Vancouver, it was RCMP, North Shore Rescue, RCM SAR, and North Shore Emergency Management, amongst others. So that really gave us an opportunity to take some lessons learned and best practices away. One of the things that came out of that from our conversations, working, especially with B C wildfire service, was our desire and their support of our desire to establish these staging areas, these emergency response staging areas. And that just reaffirmed for us that we were on the right path. Another unique thing about the district is in 2019, we formalized a special operations team of 24 district firefighters who've been trained to a level within B C wildfire service that equates to what they call a unit crew. So this group of 24 individuals have been trained in a wide scope of wildfire response with the intent that their deployment to a wildfire scene would either be by helicopter, by foot, or by boat. So obviously, our initial response is always with fire engines, and those individuals deploying and working to put out the fire in opportunities where we had major incidents or extended operations, we would then be bringing in this specialized team and sending them into the environment. They're highly interoperable with our B C wildfire partners, and they would be able to work in that environment. And it would actually allow us most likely to pull back some of our fire engines back into the community and redeploy them to protect other areas. First time that that's been done in British Columbia, and it's very unique in its model across Canada. It came out of the States. It was an initiative that came out of Arizona that had great success. And then the last really unique thing is we have an extended operations unit of 30 individuals. These individuals are district employees. They come from a wide range of positions, parks, streets, engineering. And originally, when we stood this team up in 2018, their core purpose was to enhance our capacity for wildfire. So responding to a wildfire event, we've got our resources in the field. We would then be able to call on this group of individuals who we have provided regular training to. We've exercised them. We've provided them the appropriate PPE and equipment. They would then be able to come in and give us a depth of resources, or a lot of times what we call it's really a force multiplier, where we can, you know, utilize resources that the district already has, of people who don't fight fire full-time. So those are just some highlights. Again, I'm not getting into the depths of everything we do, but just some highlights. And speaking of which, when I talk about the district being a department that others look to, one of the really unique things is that our personnel and equipment is sought after when assistance is needed across the province. And I just put a couple of years there and a few of the deployments. But in 2018, we deployed equipment and personnel to Smithers, Babine Lake, Vanderhoof. We sent resources to Richmond for their bog fire. Chief Forte was in the E O C in Telegraph Creek during their wildfires. So we tend to get people out into the field to help other communities, which gives them additional experience and expertise that they bring directly back to the district. 2020, Squamish had their wildfire early in the season. We sent our SPU with five members, and we were the only municipality from Metro Vancouver that was requested to attend. And then Penticton, last year as well, we sent one of our Task Force Leaders and one of our wildfire engines up to the area. So that, again, you know, maybe we don't do enough of, you know, championing our own accomplishments, but I wanted to give you just a general sense of who we are and how we operate in the field. I'm going to move on to some Fire Smart stuff, but Chief Forte, was there anything that came up question-wise?
Yes, we do have a question from Jeff Boniface regarding, let's see here, fire safety for parts of Indian Armed that are boat access only.
And that's, yeah. So one of the things that we've actually, as we've built out our LFR program this year, and we've already been talking about it as we came into the fall of last year, was to actually start doing more regular patrols with our partners. Was to actually start doing more regular patrols with our partners at R C M SAR. So the R C M SAR boat that's parked by the Second Narrows Bridge, the Ironworkers Bridge. They've indicated on numerous occasions that they are more than willing to get us up the arms so that we can. At least be keeping some visibility in the area in terms of what's going on. And if there's any information we can provide to homeowners to help them keep safe. Our response capability up into that area would rely again on our partners at R C M SAR. Who at our request can provide that boat access, as can the the coast guard. So we do have the coast guard access from the Kitsco Coast Guard Station as well. In one of our exercises in twenty eight, twenty nineteen, we utilized the hovercraft for transporting personnel and equipment. So again, with our partners in the region and with the fireboat. That we have a contract with out of Vancouver, we have the capability to get resources up there. And that actually takes me back to the the D N V I A C, our initial attack crew of twenty four individuals. They have been trained and equipped specifically for deployment away from the road's edge. So they know what to take with them, they can pre-deploy. And we can actually utilize our partners at Talon helicopters as well to get. Cashes of equipment into areas that we that we need. So hopefully that answered that question a bit with the boat access only places. So with that, and I won't go too deep into fire smart, Chief Fortune has already touched on this a little bit. But we were successful for a second year in a row in getting a grant from the Community Resiliency Initiative. To help support our fire smart efforts. So that really allows us to devote staff time to coming out and doing those home assessments. In my ideal world. Every building out in Woodlands, Sunshine Falls and Cascades would have a fire smart home assessment done. And and we want to support that, so. Chief for Chief Fortune and Captain Sonier with some help from Captain Breaky are working on our plan for the summer. We also want to lean in again and do the public engagement wildfire preparedness days. So there's lots of opportunities to to do that. And as most of you know, for fire lanes or for areas like Sunshine Falls where the homeowners. All get the assessments done and take some action, and a lot of those actions aren't onerous. We can actually then help you submit for recognition as a fire smart community. And while. You know, right now, we know coming out of California that the Fire Underwriters Survey and a lot of the. Big insurance companies are starting to look at how mitigation efforts by homeowners. Can actually have an impact on insurance for individuals living in those areas. Obviously, I can't speak to when that may come to B C, but certainly when we see things starting to transpire south of the border. These trends we keep our eye on to make sure that we're doing the most that we can to assist our residents. The other grant, the Fire Smart Economic Recovery Fund Grant. We put in an application for that as well to again augment the work that we can come out and do in the community. One of the other things you may see with that grant is we did put in for some additional park rangers. So there is a possibility, should we get approval through the grant, you may see some park rangers. Out in your area this summer. We know that there's a lot of probably unauthorized trails in the area and a lot of trail users. And we felt that the Rangers would provide us an opportunity to get out on those trails. Better understand what's going on on those trails, some of which are on district land. And also provide an opportunity to engage with some of those trail users and just advise them of where they are. And some of the some of the other pieces that go with that. As well as to keep them engaged and informed about the hazards of wildfire in the area. And hopefully that messaging will serve a number of purposes. I I think it probably will serve, hopefully. One of the pieces I know in the community is some concern with with, you know, the unauthorized trail users and and that type out there. So hopefully our Rangers can help mitigate some of that, so. I did put the email address up here, the fire admin, but it's fire A D M at D N V dot org. And I would encourage you, if you're at all interested in having a home assessment done. To email us and just subject line fire smart home assessment. And we will work to schedule you in at a convenient time for you during this during the summer. Again, you know, the the home assessment would be a complete package presented to you. It's then your choice what you what you get done. But remembering fire smart isn't about a clear cut. It's not about taking all the trees down. There's small steps that can be done that can make our homes better protected and more resilient in the face of of wildfire. A lot of, a lot of concern often is is that that people's. There's a perception that the fire is what's going to come up to your home and ignite it. Where the vast majority of home ignitions in the wildland urban interface are actually from ember storms. So we get the wildfire, we get some wind, the embers are we get pushed up against the home. And that's really what fire smart helps us look at is how we can protect and harden, so to speak. The home against intrusion of those embers into adjacent foliage. Or sometimes even under the home if we haven't taken mitigation measures. So I won't get too deep into fire smart. I don't know if Chief Fortune has anything she wants to add, but we certainly encourage you to. Individually and as communities to to come together and and reach out and we're happy to happy to come out, so. Chief Fortune, anything else?
Yeah, maybe I'll just clarify something, the question that came through on the chat. The fire smart assessments that are performed by our members, by the local fire smart representatives of your fire department. They're a community assessment, so that's why we've been focusing on. Fire lane two, for example, or Sunshine Falls or Gray Rocks. That is a community group. And then also just looking at Woodlands, it's way too big for us to call that an entire community. So when we started approaching this fire smart concept and working with the community. We wanted to break it up by fire lane. There is also a fire smart program for homeowners. And homeowners on their own can undertake an assessment. And you can find that information on firesmart B C dot C A. So our focus, community, we see community as being a block or a neighborhood, for example.
Yeah, and that's great, the intent is to to bring the community together, do some mitigation, maybe even schedule a cleanup day. You know, and where we can, again, we would probably reach out to our park ranger partners and have them come out and and help. Chip up brush or whatever it might be, so there's lots of opportunities with that. Chief Fortune mentioned local fire smart representatives. These are people who have been trained by fire smart B C to come out and do these assessments. The district in North Vancouver has twenty certified local fire smart representatives. There is no other fire department in British Columbia that has that depth of of L F Rs on its staff, which is. Which is fantastic, it gives us that that added ability to make sure we can come out and and support you in your community, so. Alright, so I wanted to move on to specialized equipment, so. On the, we talked about our four year apparatus plan. Big picture, we've been looking to acquire some very unique items. That will support our wildfire efforts, particularly in areas with limited hydrant supply and or no hydrant supply. And some of our capacity around command and control. So on the left hand side of your screen, those units are called hydro sub sixties. They're built in the Netherlands. They have proven themselves in the fire service in the Netherlands to to. Be extremely reliable and extremely portable. They have the ability to provide us with between a thousand to three thousand gallons per minute. The unit itself does not need to get near the water. So it has, you'll see in a minute, it has a fifty pound submersible pump that's connected by. Environmentally friendly hydraulic lines that can go out two hundred feet. So the unit stays by the road, the submersible pump goes out to the water, gets dropped in. And it's connected to one of our four inch hoses. Once it starts up, that submersible pump just pushes the water to our apparatus. The best hydrants that we have typically run in the thousand to fifteen hundred G P M range. So this, these units actually create for us. A great little hydrant system where we don't have them, so. Vancouver has one much larger, Vancouver got theirs for post disaster. On the assumption that following a seismic event, their hydrant system would most likely not be functional outside the downtown core. And the hydro sub would then become their above ground hydrant system. Berkeley, California has a couple of these, they use theirs for both post disaster. And they have a wildfire interface area with limited to no hydrants, that's where they use theirs as well. So we've been working on this for a while, we got approval this year and we have just completed the ordering process. Again, these will probably take six to eight months to build and deliver coming from the Netherlands. But they should be here by the end of the year so that we can train on them and get them in service for next season. The intent would actually be, and I'll get into this in a minute, is during high fire hazard. One of these would actually be positioned out in Cascades. And one of them would most likely be positioned at one of the staging areas. So that they were ready readily accessible for us. The other picture is a wildfire command trailer. So again, being able to really. Project our presence into an area. Having a staging area, having multiple agencies responding, you need to have a logistics, a command post. This trailer will give us that, the front twelve feet will be a multi-station command center. The back eighteen feet will actually be wildfire equipment. So again, high fire hazard, you may see this pre-positioned out into the into the Woodlands area. So that we have a presence in in there, so. With that, and there may be some questions around having equipment out there. But there is something that I wanted to share, unless Haida, you have anything that you need to throw at me. Okay, so what I'm going to do here is I need to share, just give me two seconds, I'm going to share another screen with everyone. That wasn't it. Alright, so. Sorry. Okay, so hi to give me a thumbs up, everybody can see the map. Okay, so as you can see on this map, we have an overview. Woodlands, Sunshine Falls and Cascades, and I've got three areas marked here. I'll try and go slow so it doesn't move around a lot, but I want to start with this first area right here. Okay, so everybody probably recognizes where this is, and I can show you a picture in a minute, but there's already a parking lot there. It's infrastructure that was put in place by the district. For a number of reasons, but it's it's underutilized, it's gated. And it needs a little bit of cleanup, we've got some standing dead in the area that that will our arborist says should probably come down. You won't see a lot of change to this area, other than maybe some signage indicating. That it is an emergency response staging area. Our intent is to have this, unless we get negative feedback, but our intent is to have this go live. For our summer season of twenty twenty one. Probably if we get into high fire hazard, you may see one of our trailers parked out there. The reality is is part of our overall planning approach, just so you know, is that when we hit high fire hazard. And especially when we hit extreme. Our intent is actually to staff one of our wildfire response vehicles. And station them out in this area during the days. So they could actually be starting their day at this staging area and then basically. Familiarizing, patrolling, checking hydrants, just making sure that they're engaged out in that area. With their wildfire response vehicle. So thus, on here, they've called it the remote station number one, I like the remote station. But that's our G I S department, but it's actually, that's what we're calling our our Woodlands staging area. Now, this is one of the ones I want to talk a little bit with you about. So this area. Right here at Sasmat Lane in Sunshine Falls, this is a proposal. And we're discussing it with you to be on the front end of this and to be totally transparent and to get your feedback. In our engagements and our exercises and and our training with B C wildfire and our Metro Vancouver partners. The ability to have a more centralized staging area. Out kind of in the in the heart out here would be operationally ideal. The area itself, right now, we've we've went out there, we've done some surveying, we've had our arborists come out, we've had our environmentalist. Team come out, the area appears to have already been disturbed. It's thought that perhaps, and I don't know all the history, but perhaps during the construction of the Sasmat Lane. That there was some disturbance in the area, it's district land, it's very flat. We would not be disturbing any water courses, the trees in the area appear to be second growth. And of a smaller diameter and our arborist indicates there's nothing in there of significant. Significant, you know, concern. It would require taking out some trees, now the reality is there's a berm along there right now. We would want to leave that berm in place, we would want to either enhance or replace the vegetation along the berm. So that we could go in probably about a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty flattened gravel area gated. For emergency use only. And that would give us a primary staging area for any operations that that threatened. The 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 communities out here. One of the things for us, as you all know, is the the roadways in this area are are not overly conducive to. Multiple large vehicles. So the reality is is once we get a couple of fire engines on scene. The rest of those large fire engines don't actually need to get down those roadways. We need the people, we need the resources, but we don't always need the big ladder trucks and and the the fire engine. So this would give us an area from which to stage, to put our command post, to have our other partner agencies come in and operate out of. It's not a done deal. We still need to go to council with it, but we will not go to council with it unless we have the support. Of the community in the in the area, that's that's the reality. So that's why I wanted to, and we can talk about it a little bit, but that's a proposed. Staging area that we wanted to bring to your attention and have a discussion about. Because we do believe it would enhance our capacity to respond and and serve this area. Now, the last piece I wanted to look at, sorry, that was a little faster than I wanted, was right out here in Cascades, so. I know it says construct paths for water pump access, but that's, we're not actually concerned about that right now. What we have out here is there is a district easement between three, three, two and three, three, zero. There's a small paved turnaround here, this is where we would like to preposition one of those hydro subs. During high fire season. And this is a location where. We understand that the residents in three, three, two and three, three, zero have. Beautified the district right of way to the water. And we're not interested from a fire department perspective in altering that at this time in any way. And what we would be looking for is permission and support from three, three, two. To be able to access the water down the side of their property. Obviously, in an emergency situation, I don't think anybody's concerned about it. But we would want to make sure that we were out there on a fairly regular basis and that our personnel were training and drilling with this unit. To make sure that it kept operational and that it was ready to go. So those are kind of the three pieces that we wanted to talk about. So those are kind of the three pieces that we wanted to talk about. In terms of some geography and the staging areas. I do have a little bit more on that, so I'm gonna. Stop sharing hopefully, Haida, if I'm going too fast or missing people's questions. Let me know and I can I can stop.
Well, I will just pass on a comment from Sharon Crowley at 332 Sasmat Lane. She said that we are in support of your proposal.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. That's fantastic. So let me just go back in here. I just wanna, I just got a couple more slides in that PowerPoint. I don't wanna. PowerPoint everybody to to no end here, but I just want to finish this piece off. It's great to hear that you're supportive. That is. Fantastic. So so let me share this. Okay, so. Hi, we can see my screen again. Okay, good. So just to review, I think we, everybody probably drives by this a million times a day. The picture on the right obviously shows the gate open. But the intent is to keep that that gate closed and for the fire service to kind of take ownership. Of that of that parking area, clean it up a little bit. Our intent is to leave all the foliage along the berm. Not change any of that. We don't want to change the natural look. We may put a sign up there, just letting people know what it is. And that's probably where you would see, you know, maybe some of our equipment or one of our trucks parked. In the summertime, should we be looking to pre-deploy our resources out into that area? So as I mentioned, we've looked at the Sasmat staging area. That's the picture on the right. Is where the entrance is again, along the right hand side of this picture is that large berm. With foliage along it, we we would either enhance that, we would certainly not be taking away from it. Ideally for us, the only time that you would really notice that the staging area was in there. Is as you drove up to where it already looks like there was an entrance. And you would see a gate and and an entrance and a gravel pad in there. But again. This has to have community support before we would look to move forward on it. So. So and then. As I mentioned, a little another rendering of the hydro sub. So not only would we, and it's great to have the support from 332. In other situations, if the tide was quite a ways out, we may need to back the trailer down. Either just to the north of 335 there or just down the driveway between. 330 and 328, but in an emergency situation, I would hope nobody would have any. Concerns with that because we'd be out there for a reason. So that's just to give you an idea. And as you can see in the the cartoonish rendering of the hydro sub, you can see that submersible. Unit that actually gets carried its 50 pounds. Gets carried by firefighters out to the water and and dropped in. Certainly, if you're interested. Type in hydro sub in on YouTube and you can see tons of its use. In particularly in Europe. Haida, before I move on from our overview, anything that we need to jump on?
You know what? Just some general comments that are coming in from quite a lot of people for support. Lynn Elaine Minicello, and then we have the Myers and Birch families from Sasmat Lane. We do have John commenting that, you know, this should be directed to district staff. So my, I would imagine, chief, do you have plans for? Doing some kind of a survey or or anything like that to elicit support?
Yeah, so the intent was that I would be reaching back out to our primary contacts. That we that we have in the community. And with our communications division as well at District Hall would be trying to reach out. And see where the residents, our hope is that the I know that, you know, you you are a community out there and. And that we could find our find out the level of support. Through those primary contacts that we have and then look to look to move forward. So. And in terms of engage, we can, we can follow up on the John's question around district staff. In terms of what that would be looking for, Haida?
Yeah. I I think that was just a general comment, but we do have an offer from Olivier Vincent. For Sunshine Falls, he is willing to partake in a quick survey.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, we will follow up after the presentation in the next few days. And engage with again our our primary points of contact. And hopefully we can find the best way to kind of get a good understanding of how we can determine. What level of support there is in the community for these for these initiatives. Particularly, you know, the the one that we really want to know is the the Sasmat staging area. So with that. That leads me into what our request to you is, and that is our request is that as we look to engage. With our staging areas with woodlands and the Sasmat staging areas. That we get your feedback. If you have concerns, if you have questions. We've done a lot of the front end work. We have our engineering team working with us to scope out. What this project would look like, what it would entail and the various elements. So we have. The support of the District of North Vancouver behind this initiative. But we've made it very clear that we're, we will only move forward with with community support, particularly for Sasmat. My other ask is, as we begin pre-deploying equipment out into your area, when we get into high fire hazard. In the in the district is that this equipment in reality is your equipment. And so we would ask that as you watch over your your neighbors. That you watch over this equipment for us. And if something seems amiss, if something doesn't seem right. That that you reach out and let us know. Our intent would be to have staff on a regular basis. Coming out and checking and testing our equipment. We would obviously put security measures in place so that it doesn't get hooked up to another truck and drove away. But you all know the area far better than we do. You're there far more than we are. And so that would be our ask is that you provide us with another set of eyes on this on this equipment. The other request is that you consider as communities engaging in in the Fire Smart program. We're very happy to support it and lean in and and really help you make sure. That we're doing everything possible to make your homes defensible. What that does for us is that when we do have to respond. It makes our response far more effective when we're dealing with the incident itself. And our residents, our homeowners have taken the actions to mitigate and lessen. The chance of their homes catching fire because that changes. Obviously, that changes the dynamic for us significantly, going from dealing with a wildfire. To dealing with a fire that's now moved in to our residential structures. So we want to the best structure fire is one that doesn't happen. So we want to engage with you on that as well. Stay informed. We do have an active Facebook and Twitter account. Now, I know everybody's not on social media, but certainly if we have incidents going on. We try and get the messaging out almost immediately. We know that it's a benefit to our residents to understand what's going on in the area. So we try and provide that information. So if you're ever unsure, if you see something going on. And there's activity. Those social media platforms for us are a great way to communicate out. The other piece you may want to consider is the alertable app. So North Shore Emergency Management. Is supporting the alertable app. You can go to their website. I've put it at the bottom of the page there at. NSEM slash alertable. And it will provide you with community notifications, critical alerts, any of those directly to your to your phones. So. That's another way to to stay engaged with us and allow us to to engage with you as well. So. With that, not wanting to spend too much time in PowerPoint world. That is actually the completion of the PowerPoint presentation in terms of giving you an overview of. Where we're at, what we're trying to do and and the why. So hopefully I've stopped sharing my screen. And we can answer any questions, Haida. I do see that you're indicating we have something to answer.
Yes, we do. We have a number of questions. And the McNords and Woodlands are fully supportive of the proposal. They have a question about communications in the event of a wildfire, which I do believe you've just answered. Is there a formal process or means for us all to hear what is evolving readiness to evacuate, etc.?
And I would say either the social media platforms or that alertable app, which we would lean heavily into. If we were giving evacuation notices or evacuation orders. And not only would we have personnel going door to door, but we would be utilizing that app well in advance. And our and our social media feeds as well. So.
Excellent. We have another question here from Jeff Boniface. What do we need to do to have you assess boat access communities?
Yeah, same thing. That fire. ADM at DNV.org. You send us, send us that email request for a fire smart assessment and we will come your way. Again, our partners at. Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue, we have partnered heavily with over the past, you know, five to eight years. And they will, well, they will pretty much do anything for us. So they're happy to get us out there. We helped Camp Jubilee become Fire Smart recognized. Last year, 2020 was that or 2019? And RCM SAR was our primary means of getting back and forth. So. Just reach out and we will we'll get out there to see you.
Good answer. We also have a question from Lori. Would the gate at Sasmat and Sunshine staging area only be? In the summer? So would the gate be closed only in the summer? I think maybe is where we're going with that. I think it would be closed whenever we're not using it.
Yeah, the intent would be that that would be a secure, a secure area so it doesn't become a parking lot. For people unless that's something that is is of interest, but our intent would be. That that it would be gated and it would be it would be shut all year long.
I think that actually leads into a question from Maureen Oliver. What would be the plan to prevent theft and vandalism since the equipment is pricey? And you you did talk a bit about this, but maybe you could just.
Sure. So there's a few security measures that that we're looking at to put in place. Whether it's a notification system, if the equipment is is moved and not decoded beforehand. Also putting boots on the, you know, those metal boots on the wheels. Ideally, we don't want this, we don't want this stuff moving unless we're moving it. That would not look good. So we would be taking those those efforts as well as, you know, a presence. And that's part of it too for us, you know. Pre-deploying equipment, having staging areas gives us another opportunity to have our personnel. Make their way out into this area, which. As much as we try right now and and we're getting better at it, a lot of our members, because we have five fire stations. Across the district, not everybody gets a lot of time out in Deep Cove. They may only be getting out there when they're responding to something. So we know that this will provide us more scheduled opportunities that we will have. In our training calendar where our staff can actually go out there, check our equipment, train on it. And just familiarize even more with the general area.
Excellent. So we can also count on the Fleming and Daniel's families and they are thankful for this evening. I'm thinking maybe the Fleming and Daniel's families might want to contact us for scheduling an assessment.
Okay.
That's a great way to show your support. You can help yourself too. Jill Berwick has asked, what is the communication between you and parks?
Parks. So between BC parks or district parks. So. If it's BC parks, they have a very lean staff in the Metro Vancouver area. We do meet with their superintendent fairly regularly. But honestly, BC parks has like three park rangers. For. Well, for Mount Seymour, for the area out by Horseshoe Bay, yeah, they're pretty lean. Our relationship with the district and North Vancouver Parks is very, very close. We train their park rangers on an annual basis and we engage throughout the season with them. Both at Corey Rock, Lynn Canyon. The we're very interoperable with our own district park staff. And we're continuing to build our relationship with BC parks. But like I said, they have very limited resources that they can bring to bring to bear.
And I would add that our relationship with our parks rangers is excellent. They reach out to us all season long. With any concerns that they have and things that they note in the forest and they're very proactive.
And that even comes a lot with the, you know, we do get in the district, some homeless encampments. In our wildland urban interface area and our park rangers. Whether we're notified or whether they're notified, we share that information regularly because we know that. There often can be a fire hazard with that type of habitation in our in our forested areas. So. Very closely working with them. So.
Yeah, excellent. And for for those in attendance, you may notice that there's a web link for a home ignition scorecard that Captain Solney has listed. We also have a question here from Morris Nord. On the alertable app. What location do we put in to not get all of the DMV? So does it have the ability to focus in on the deep coat woodlands? Area.
Yeah, I believe it. I believe it does, depending on the level of notification. So this is still. The alertable app for North Shore Emergency Management is still fairly new. I think going in and spending some time with it would would help clarify for that, but. They're very helpful as well. I get it. You might not want a notification that the water is rising in the Cap River. If you're out in Indian Arm. So there, I believe, as I recall them mentioning, there is a filter piece in there. That you can geographically identify.
So then I would guess if if we can't figure it out ourselves by digging into it a bit deeper, we could contact NSEM, North Shore Emergency Management.
Yep.
Okay, or even look on their website. There might be more information on how to do that. John has posted a question comment. He says, sorry, this is my comment that is probably more for district staff. The access on Indian River Drive is tight and there is cars parked frequently in the many pullouts along Indian River Drive. Maybe some no parking signs at all pull out so they don't get blocked when fire trucks and equipment need to get down into the area in a hurry. Just to note, there was a car actually parked in the second switchback today. Difficult for a fire truck to get by.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can certainly. Look at what signage would be appropriate. I think if we could, maybe I can follow up with John and we can identify maybe some problem areas. Geographically and then we can certainly pass that on to our streets department. And look at how that would work in terms of getting some additional signage out there. Speaking of signage. I hope everybody liked our wildfire signage that we put out there. We'll come out, we'll get it cleaned up. But we wanted to make sure that our messaging got out there. So I think our communications division did a great job of those of those signs. So.
Yeah, as did the installer.
Ah, yes.
So Lori has clarified her question about the staging area near Sunshine Falls. So that area is used in the winter. For parking of cars when the road is icy. Which is why.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't block off the the pullout that's already there. I mean, again, that would be an opportunity to work with with the residents in there. Should we move forward with support of the community and putting the staging area in there? We could probably work to enhance that little area there so that the the if you do need to park up there. That you could still access access that. We wouldn't want to take anything away from what you obviously, and that is a steep hill. But from what you need to to be safe out there. So that would be part of the conversation we'd be happy to have. Moving forward.
Yeah, that's great. We also have another question from Olivier Vincent. We have some private boats parked long term in the Sunshine Falls parking area. Is it okay to claim they are dangerous, preventing fire vehicles to maneuver in this area in order to ask for them to be removed? Which he thinks he's going to claim anyways. Which he thinks he's going to claim anyways. So, currently having access issues there.
Yes. So, I mean, now that, uh, so I've tried to look on our GeoWeb, that land I believe is private land there. Um, but everybody in Sunshine Falls would know far better than I do in terms of the ownership of that piece of, uh, piece of land, whether that's held commonly amongst the group or whether that is a, is a single owner. Um, obviously, and having been down there, we do need the ability to turn apparatus, uh, just past the hydrant in the big turnaround area there. Um, but I think our ability to determine, um, if, if it is private land, our ability to tell somebody to, to move it may be somewhat limited. Um, but we'd be happy to be part of the conversation if that was something that we were looking to do with the owner of the vessel, um, and, uh, see if we could uh, help encourage them to relocate that. Okay.
Excellent. A good answer. Uh, okay, Dee Daniel says she's gonna reach out and, um, I'm assuming request, uh, an assessment for her area. So that's great. Thank you. Please send us an email. We have the money to do it. And we would love to do that for you. Okay, Elaine Minicello. Thank you for your presentation and time. We look forward to seeing your presence in the community this summer. So that is something that you've committed to that, uh, our presence. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we will. We will be out there. I know Captain Sonier's, uh, planning. Again, I, I think in twenty twenty, we did, uh, a wildfire preparedness day in June. Um, our intent is actually to enhance that, uh, with, with some additional dates, um, and, and locations across the district. Um, but obviously out there as well. So, yeah. Great question. And, and the name sounds very familiar, given that we have a firefighter Minicello as well.
We do, that's right.
I, I just wanted to make a note, uh, for those who are getting, um, their community and neighborhood assessments. When we do present the, uh, overall community picture, we're touching on all the things that each individual home can do. It's part of, it'd probably be the same list of recommendations per property than as the whole neighborhood as well. So, um, there'll be lots of information there, um, as a community, but we could also reach out, you know, work on those individual ones as well. But in the meantime, while you're waiting to book and, and get, uh, get us up to your property, there is the scorecard and the Fire Smart BC, um, website is fantastic for explaining the program, things that you can do without us being there yet and, uh, you know, taking some first steps.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have a few more questions. The McDonald's at three oh seven SASS mat fully support these initiatives and ask if there's anything we can do to assist. Please let us know. You can absolutely assist by sending us an email and asking us to, um, do Fire Smart assessment for your community. Um, that's, that's taking a lot of that proactive component into your own hands. So.
Yep, and, and as we reach out to, to the, the community in terms of seeking, you know, support, whether it's a, uh, a letter on behalf of, uh, you know, the, the, the communities supporting the SASS mat staging area, stuff like that will, will also be very helpful. Should, uh, should the, should everyone feel that that's, um, I know I'm, I, I'm making it, I'm trying to be very cognizant of, of the, there's a, I get that there's a reason that, um, you know, everyone enjoys, uh, residing out in the area and it's, it's the wild area and it's, uh, you know, uh, it's that natural environment. And our intent is not to, uh, completely alter that. We, our intent is with the staging areas to just be able to provide a higher level of protection. But I wanna be very respectful and cognizant of the fact that this is the area that, uh, many of you, um, spend a lot of time in. So, yeah.
Yeah, good point, good point. Sharon, uh, Crowley said the signage was excellent. So I'm thinking signage is probably a pretty good way for us to reach your communities when we are planning to do some outreach. Probably a good thing to keep in mind, cause your signs were excellent. Cindy McDonald, are there any plans by the province or district to do fuel abatement along the public road?
So at this point in time, while we have a very robust, um, what's called prescription or fuel reduction program in the district, um, they've been working, uh, specific areas that are immediately adjacent to that urban interface to those homes areas. So I don't think the, the mapping that I've seen at this point in time, that there's any fuel reduction plans along the roadways. That said, um, you know, the more time that we spend out there and the greater presence we have out there may provide us opportunities, uh, obviously of opportunities for engagement, but opportunities to also be able to, um, assess from our perspective and share back with the district, uh, around some of that, uh, opportunities for fuel reduction. Those obviously, um, are all funded opportunities, uh, that, that the district has to look long-term at and, and prioritize. So.
Excellent. Um, Sharon Crowley, thank you for the wonderful presentation. We will definitely be requesting a home assessment. Fully supportive and impressed. Thank you so much. And you know what? I would say on that, I, I get being impressed. I am impressed with our department all the time. And I, I actually said that to a number of you when I was out walking through the neighborhood after the fire that, that we had out there last year is our department is amazing. We are operationally planning. We are practicing. We are being proactive. We're helping you to get proactive. And yeah, you know what? I, I love the work that we've been doing. We could always do more, but thank you very much. Um, Olivier Vincent, there are apparently some photos of the massive jam of fire trucks unable to maneuver during the Sunshine Falls fire. That may help to convince people to support the staging area if they're on the fence. That's a great suggestion. Brian Bidewell, does the district fire department have any plans to use the Sunshine Falls community dock for evacuating or staging?
So, uh, evacuation planning, and I will give North Shore Emergency Management, uh, a lot of credit, is there, there is a lot of planning, uh, put in place for evacuation. Um, we also are pretty confident that a, a lot of our, our residents out in the area, um, have, uh, their own means of evacuating if they can't use the roads. Um, but certainly, again, our partners at, uh, part of the planning is with our partners at North Shore, um, RCM SAR, Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue, the Coast Guard, our fireboats, uh, and even the port. The port has a lot of, uh, transport vessels, uh, that can help us as well. So, uh, I know that there's been some assessments done on the dock and there's talk about some refurbishment uh, around the, the dock to keep it, uh, usable, uh, moving forward. So hopefully that answers that. But yes, uh, fire-wise, um, if we had to, um, but we would probably more like to leave that as an access point, either for personnel coming or personnel leaving as opposed to jamming it up with, say, a fireboat running a hose line, uh, up the dock and, and being there. There's other ways that we can operationally get water where we need to. So.
Excellent. So we have some other great comments about us and agreement that we are all pretty amazing and fortunate to have us looking after the area. So thank you, everybody.
Good, yeah. Excellent. Well, hopefully, um, hopefully for everyone that's been informative. If there are any more questions, like I said, uh, the, the, Heidi's monitoring that chat or you can put up your hand, but if, if not, uh, I will just close by, uh, thanking everybody for taking the time this evening. I know it's an hour and a half of your, of your evening, but we, we appreciate your involvement, uh, and, and your attention. And hopefully the information was, uh, informative uh, invaluable. And, um, you know, like I say, I will be reaching out, uh, to the, the core, uh, contact group that I have. And then hopefully we can start a discussion around, um, you know, the, uh, the staging areas, SASS mat in particular. And we can follow up on a few of the other items. Um, and then hopefully, uh, we'll start to see some requests coming in for, uh, uh, assessments to be, to be done as well. So, sorry, that's on my end. All right. So if there's nothing else, everyone, um, Chief Fortune, thank you. Chief Dale's had to step out, Captain Breaky and Captain Sonier, and everybody from the community, thanks again for your time. And, uh, as always, feel free to reach out. We will also share this recording and, uh, you can pass on to anyone else that you, uh, that you may see appropriate. So, thanks again, everybody.